While I am present, I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on matters contained in the notice for this meeting, as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive session or session, then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the board will now be held. The time is 5:31 p.m.
And the board is now in open session. The time is six oh seven P M. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is one forty-seven oh five Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero one five. The time is six oh seven P M. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are not the responsibility, are the responsibility of the Superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the mo- notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by section five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight four, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We have no public comments for non-agenda items today. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Noe Esparza and the pledges of the American and Texas flags will be led by the North Shore Middle School Army L O T C. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to give you thanks for all the blessings you've bestowed on us in our district this year. We give you all the glory. As we deliberate tonight, we ask, Father, for your presence and guidance so that all decisions we make bring us closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. We pray for the many activities that happen in our district and that you keep everyone safe. Bless our leaders so that they continue to make the decisions necessary for the benefit of our staff, students, and community. Lastly, Father, we ask for your blessing for this weekend as our Mustangs continue their journey to state. Let let your will be done and keep both teams safe. We also ask, Father, that your will be a North Shore victory. We ask all this in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
Okay, greetings. Uh, thanks for coming out tonight. Uh, it's not raining out. Is it still raining? It's good raining. All right. Been a while since I've been out there, but I appreciate your time. Uh, we got a real treat for you tonight in a few minutes. Uh, I think you'll enjoy it. Uh, we'll get on with the show so we can get to the fun.
All right. Good evening. Trustee Linda Clark Sherrod, would you please join Dr. Moore tonight for tonight's recognitions? Galena Park I S D would like to begin this evening's recognitions by inviting Sam Harris, Director of Fine Arts, to the stage. Mrs. Holly Malloy, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Support, and Dr. Kimberly Martin, Executive Director for Accountability and Academic Support, will you please join him on stage as well? Mr. Harris has been named a Museum of Fine Arts Houston Learning and Interpretation Committee member. Mr. Harris's membership on this committee further deepens the more than two decades of partnership between Galena Park I S D and the Museum of Fine Arts Houston, which he initiated when he became Galena Park I S D's Director of Fine Arts in two thousand. Mr. Harris, thank you for connecting Galena Park I S D with the museum community. Next, we have, Galena Park I S D would also like to recognize Galena Park High School F F A students Genevieve Gomez and Marjorie Reyes. And as they're joining us on stage, we also ask of their teachers and principal, Principal Juan Ramirez, and Director for Career and Technology Education, Toby Castro, will you also please join them on stage? Genevieve and Marjorie advanced to sale at the State Fair of Texas on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the Market Lamb Show. Genevieve Gomez placed eighth and Marjorie Reyes placed ninth in their competition classes. Each student earned an impressive twelve hundred dollar scholarship for future education or animal projects. Genevieve and Marjorie, Galena Park I S D is proud of you and congratulations. And now we have to get the family in the picture. So come on up, Mom, and here we go. Let's get the proud parents up here as well. And a round of applause for those ladies once more. Thank you. Any Board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I do. I just want to say congratulations to you two young ladies and I also want to say congratulations to Mr. Harris. I had the privilege of learning under Mr. Harris. He was my Corral teacher in high school and I know how passionate he is about fine arts and congratulations. Well deserved.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I know we got, still got like two weeks, finals and everything, so every, just have a So just have a safe trip. You know, because school will be there when you come back. And I know it's like halfway in January. So I know my wife's complaining that you have too many days off. So just enjoy it, be safe, and you know, remember the real meaning of Christmas and have a blessed day.
I just want to say, go Mustangs!
Sam Harris, Director for Fine Arts and Academic Enrichment, will present the academic spotlight with a video highlighting the Galena Park ISD Fine Arts Academies. The Galena Park High School Choir Chorale will perform live.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Moore. I'm really excited tonight to talk to you about something innovative that Galena Park ISD is doing that I don't think anyone else in the greater Houston area is doing like we're doing it. Hi, I'm Sam Harris, Director of Fine Arts and Academic Enrichment, and I want to talk to you about something new and exciting that's happening in Galena Park ISD. We've started our two Fine Arts Academies at Cimarron and Pyburn Elementary School. Well, what does that mean? That means that rather than just music and art at our traditional elementary schools, the students at Pyburn and Cimarron have six Fine Arts instructors, two music teachers, two visual art teachers, a librarian teaching theater, and a dance instructor. Students receive twice as much music, twice as much visual art instruction, as well as dance and theater. Even more on top of that, our elementary curriculum team has created integrated arts lessons for our classroom teachers. So you might see classrooms being instructed in music to teach reading, in art to teach math, or theater to teach social studies. So now, you're going to hear more from our teachers and our students.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jimenez, the proud principal of Cimarron Elementary Fine Arts Academy. We are very excited to be hosting this new program at our school. Our children have the opportunity to rotate through two music classes, two art classes, a brand-new theater arts and dance class. When they are exposed and have opportunities to build their creativity and artistic side, we're able to tap into that side of the brain. And then we know, of course, that they need to have their reading, their math, and their science, and their social studies. So we're able to develop that logical side of the brain. So the Fine Arts Academy gives us that opportunity to enhance both the artistic and the logical side of the brain.
I think having an art program at a young age is super important for a lot of reasons. One reason that's probably more timely is just that with technology and instant gratification, a lot of kids are losing the ability to imagine and be creative. And so that's where we come in. And we give them opportunities to step outside of that, to use their brain, to create things on their own. Instead of just clicking a button and getting an instant result, they have to kind of work about it, work on it, think about it. You know, if we're drawing something, I ask them, well, you know, you just drew a cowboy boot, okay? Where is it? It doesn't have to be in the desert. Is it on the beach? Is it in outer space? You know, so I give the kids freedom, even if we have kind of a set goal for what we're drawing. They have some flexibility and some opportunities to imagine and to create things that come from within.
We had two art teachers that helped us more, learn more about the different kinds of elements of arts and different techniques that we can learn and we can do more kinds of stuff. And with dance, we get to do more dances that we never got to do. And with music, we get to do more fun stuff.
So as a third-grade teacher integrating the fine arts, I've seen a lot of engagement. The students are excited to learn. The students, I think they retain a lot more of the lesson because they're involved. They get to, you know, move with their whole body. Whether it's, you know, finding the rhythm in a poem and we're using drumsticks to find the rhythm of the poem. They are very, there's something that they don't get to do every day or everywhere. And so they're very excited. And I've seen really a big growth in my students this year because of that.
When she does fine arts in the classroom, it gives me a relaxation for everybody and it also lets me have creativity and also it helps me encourage myself to do more stuff.
I will say that I was told at the beginning of the year that Dylan was more quiet, shy, and reserved. But she also told me that her confidence has built a little bit through the Fine Arts Academy, which has allowed her to step out of her comfort zone and join a swim team, in which she had a meet this week and did very well. But she had built that confidence up from the music, from the arts, and being able to do such things like that.
Like when I draw a page, it helps me get more creative with my writing and score fucking half more ideas to help me get better.
For example, I might have students that are a little bit more reluctant with their academics in allowing fine arts into the classroom. It gives them an opportunity to see the skills that they have and, you know, may not even recognize that they have these abilities and incorporate them into their general education. It allows them to build confidence doing such and it's a little bit more calming and relaxing for some students as well.
I teach fifth grade to kindergarten with library. We also integrate stage direction. We integrate puppets. We integrate poetry and plays. We just recently did the prose and poetry contest. Right now, we have second graders working on stage direction. Every Friday morning, we have Author Society, which is a club that we started for young writers and readers of all ages, so from kindergarten to fifth grade. They're welcome to come in in the mornings and participate in multiple competitions that we have. And we just recently did Scary Tales, so this month it's Wonderverse.
We've noticed that the kids are a little bit more motivated to do well with their academic work. They are excited to be here at school. We've seen some improvements in our attendance and we are just excited to see them as well.
Oh, hello. My name's Con Ravelvera, proud principal of Pyburn Elementary Fine Arts Academy. And I too actually am a product of Galena Park ISD, Galena Park High School, class of '91. I was a drummer in the high school marching band for four years. And band is what kept me wanting to go to school. And that's something that motivated me to go to school and to do well with my classes so that I could stay in the fine arts program. But here at Pyburn Elementary, we're in our first semester of having the Fine Arts Academy and our students are excited to come to school, as I was when I was a kid. There's an atmosphere of excitement here all the time because of the various fine arts activities and programs and performances that we have throughout the semester. And we're looking forward to more of that in our second semester.
Through our fine arts program, I am able to teach not only our core curriculum, balancing with my co-teacher in arts, Mrs. Flores. I'm also allowed to enrich that curriculum with extra activities. We started a new program where we're trying to show their art more at our PTA meetings and we're able to bring the community in more to look at what we're doing here at Pyburn. The students are able to, because of our two art classes, get their hands on different kinds of materials and two different teaching styles, which really broadens their experience of art in the school classroom.
So the arts, actually, when we first were notified that we were going to get a Fine Arts Academy here at Pyburn, me myself was very excited about that because I love to integrate arts in every single subject that I teach. Language arts, science, math, social studies even, because I feel that the engagement with kids, especially this age, is more appropriate since they need the motivation to learn all these skills that sometimes are a little hard for them to understand. But having a way with fine arts and all these activities, music, manipulating, creating, singing, dancing, is a way for them to learn these skills in an easier, fun way for them to be able to master all these skills that are part of our official end-of-the-year assessments with the kids.
I've noticed a increase in students that are interested in fine arts, that they have more opportunities now to join choir and dance. We have two art teachers who are both doing wonderful jobs, doing new projects that the students are interested in and they're really enjoying all the aspects of fine arts and the collaboration that's happening between our team.
Two, three, four. Very good. Then we're going to drag step. We go to the side. One, two, three, four, five, six. We miss south.
Being the dance instructor here at Pyburn, I get the opportunity to expose the kids to different dance genres and to get them moving and get some of that energy out that they have. Sometimes they really have to sit in the classroom for an extended amount of time. I offer them that break to just move and relax and have fun. One of the main benefits of having fine arts here in schools is offering students an outlet of expression and learning ways to express how they're feeling or things that they're thinking in a healthy and collaborative environment.
So what's the future of our Fine Arts Academies? I don't know. It's only limited to the creativity of our teachers, our parents, and our students. We're going to have more performing ensembles in music. We're already teaching our traditional orf instruments in marimba, our honor choir, but now we're including ukulele and adding handbells and tone chimes. With the rebuild of Cimarron, we'll add firing kilns so our kids can do sculpture and clay work. There's so much more that we're going to be able to do with our academies. Maybe we offer the integrated arts lessons to every campus teacher on every campus to integrate music, art, theater, and dance in every elementary classroom. The future is really bright for fine arts and Galena Park ISD is really a great place to be. We have some staff here from the schools. If they could stand up and recognize them, they're doing an incredible job from Pyburn. Thank you guys so much. And before I open to questions, since we filmed, there's a couple of new things that are going to be happening at our academies. As a member of the Learning and Innovation Committee for the museum, they presented to us, they have a new, it's called like a traveling exhibition, where they're using 3D printers to print some of their sculptures. And they're taking them out to schools and HISD for students to touch and manipulate and it opens up a whole new world for them. Well, of course, I said, hey, I've got an idea for that. And they contacted me and they're going to open that to our academies, hopefully for next year and more of the schools. Additionally, I've been in conversation with the Hobby Center. They've had some big corporate grants and they're starting a new program for fifth graders, completely free, and they'll reimburse us for the buses. And next year, there'll be meetings in the spring for me to go and select multiple programs for our kids at Pyburn and Cimarron to go throughout '25, '26 to the Hobby Center. Do you all have any questions for me about our academies? Great. Well, if the board and cabinet will find a seat out here. Let me get you all across before they start walking. Tonight, to bring you a little Christmas cheer, we have the Galena Park High School Chorale under the direction of Mr. Daniel Ponce. And they will start coming in in just a moment. While we're waiting, I don't know if I've ever told you or if you don't know, Mr. Ponce and I, Mr. Ponce and I have been friends since we met in undergraduate school at Texas State when I was a junior and he was a freshman in 1983. You can do the math if you want, but we've been friends for a long time. Daniel Ponce and the Galena Park High School Chorale.
First off, it is a French anthem, but it's not French, at least the first two verses, there are two solos. So you'll see two of you perform English and the last one will be performing in French. So you'll see two of you perform English, and the last one, that would be more in French.
We are all here to help you. 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 We are all here to help you.
We have Nancy Jones, and we have Diego Veria and Sofia Davis.
But I shall praise thee evermore with sorrows sweet and true thy Lord. The tears of my heart shine my way. And sing as I, alu, alu, alu.
Open the ground, boys, let's be bright. A heaven and a paradise, a dragonite night. Two hearts are thrilling despite of the chill in the weather, the weather. Love is a season, love is a crime. Goodness, we're lost all in your time. Here in the open, we're walking in open together, together. Stay with me, I listen. In the land, it's always twisting. A fool's soul, a man's heart, walking in a winter wonderland. Gone away is the bluebird. It stays is the bluebird. He's still those eyes, he's bluebird, walking in a winter wonderland. Ooh, when the weathering gets so bad, the pretenders, he is rising round. Who's your old man? But you can do the job when you're in town. There's a lot of wonder conspired as we feed by the fire. Two souls are children, a weakling, walking in a winter wonderland. Ooh, walking in a winter wonderland.
Thank you so much. That was so beautiful. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Ed Martier, Director for Facility Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program and facilities construction update.
Madam President, Board, Dr. Moore? Sorry, a little shorter. Cabinet, good evening. Just quick presentation on 2016. Pyburn Elementary, we had an issue with one of the mechanical units. We actually contacted Carrier, and they're going to take care of that. So it'll be fixed and repaired by the end of this week. We are still going through some pay apps, and really, we're almost down to just retainage and some punch list items that have come up. That's about it for Pyburn. A couple of images for you if you haven't seen it. It actually turned out to be a really nice building, an aerial of it. We are planning on adding a fence on between that median and the bayou at some point. Galena Park High School, we also have some punch list items. We have some, I guess, equipment that have been out of stock or, you know, out of, well, it's been out of stock. So it's back in stock, and the contractors are installing the lights now and doing some programming. It should also be complete in the next two weeks so they can, the students can maximize on the TV part of it upstairs in the CTE wing. This is the welding area. I don't know if, like I said, if, I don't know if you've all taken a tour of it. It's actually a very nice setup and a very nice plan. This is towards the main entrance of the CTE for the public. I believe that's it. So we'll be a little busier. We'll have, you're approving some stuff for tonight for the new bond, so we look forward to showing you a little more stuff other than the old slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martier. We now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve releasing the district's right of first refusal on a six-acre tract of real property and delegate authority to the superintendent or designate to provide a right of first refusal letter?
I know we, Espaza move, we approve releasing the district's right of first refusal on a six-acre tract of real property as presented.
Aye, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Espaza and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the general consent agenda?
Aye, Amanda Arabia, move. We approve the general consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Aye, Linda Sherrod, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Arabia and seconded by Linda Sherrod. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
Aye, Ramon Garza, move. We approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I know we, Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
Aye, Adrian Stevens, move. We approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
Aye, Amanda Arabia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. Dr. Juana Giaccona, Chief Administrative Officer, presented number one, 2024-25 Gifted and Talented Enrollment Report. Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes, October of 2024. Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary of October of 2024. Letter B. Mr. Ben Poppy, Chief Financial Officer, presented number one, Tax Collection Report, October of 2024. And number two, 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of October the 31st of 2024. There be no further business before the board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:49 PM.
Last Monday.
Jose.